It is 7:05. We will reconvene in open session of the special meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session under sections 551.072 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. No action was taken. I'm sorry, we're getting started a few minutes late. We will move through the agenda as quickly as possible. If you have a cellphone or electronic device with you, if you would turn that off, we would appreciate it. And as I remind you every month, the Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. Management is the sole responsibility of the Superintendent and his staff. And at this time, we'd ask that you join us as we pause for a moment of silence for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. We'll move on to Item 6, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. DeBeere.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from Dean Highland Elementary School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please welcome Isabella Aguiar and Isaiah Taveras.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Dr. Nelson, members of the Board, would you please join me in front of the dais for tonight's special recognitions? We'll begin the special recognition portion of our meeting this evening with an introduction of our pledge leaders who both attend Dean Highland Elementary School. First, I'd like to introduce you again to Isabella Aguiar, a fifth grader at Dean Highland Elementary School, who says science is her favorite subject. She enjoys playing soccer and basketball, and when Isabella grows up, she wants to become a doctor. Isabella's teacher, Ms. Mills, says she is a hard-working fifth grader who enjoys helping others. She is kind, compassionate, and dedicated to being her best. Isabel is a top AR student and an AB Honor Roll student. Isabella's father, Leo Aguiar, was unable to join us this evening, but her mother, Gloria Aguiar, has accompanied her here tonight. Would you please stand so that we can recognize you in sharing your daughter with us this evening? Isaiah Taveras is also a fifth grader at Dean Highland and says that his favorite subject is also science. Isaiah likes to play soccer and plays for the Boca Juniors. When he grows up, Isaiah wants to be an experimental physicist. Isaiah's science teacher, Mr. Rodriguez, says that's in his future and that Isaiah is an outstanding student. When it comes to school projects, Isaiah is both creative and innovative. He is very well-mannered and mindful of his feelings and of his peers. Isaiah's father, Giorgio Sanchez, was unable to attend this evening, but his mother, Myra Gutierrez, has also joined us, and we'd like you to stand so that we can thank you for sharing your son with us. We also want to say thank you to our adoptive school partner, Barnes &amp; Noble, for donating the gift cards that our pledge leaders are receiving tonight. Each year, Education Service Center, Region 12, which spans 12 counties and includes 76 school districts, selects an elementary and secondary Counselor of the Year for the region. These awards are based on each counselor's impact on his or her students. This year, one counselor from Waco ISD was surprised when her name was announced as the Region 12 Elementary Counselor of the Year at the annual Counselor Appreciation Luncheon on February 8th. This evening, it's my pleasure to introduce to you our award-winning counselor from Bells Hill Elementary School, Ms. Allison Cornell. Ms. Cornell says that she loves being a safe person, that the students can always come to and know that they can be heard and be safe. Bells Hill Principal Rebecca Meckel says Mrs. Cornell is always willing to help in any way possible. She supports our students and wants the best for them. You'll often see Mrs. Cornell conferencing with students, talking with them at lunch, and tutoring students to support academic success. Mrs. Cornell is an all-around great person. She is always willing to go above and beyond for our students and staff. Waco ISD is incredibly proud of the work of Mrs. Cornell and all of our counselors do for our students each and every day. They are too often unsung heroes, but we're glad that Mrs. Cornell has received this much-deserved recognition for leading the work of counselors in our region. Thank you. In Waco ISD, we realize that in addition to academics, students find their passions in athletics, CTE, the fine arts, and many other programs that allow them to hone their talents, discover a voice, and even potential future careers. This evening, one of those programs allowed a UHS student an opportunity to take skills learned in art and graphic design classes at University High School and apply them to the real world. In collaboration with the Waco Fire Department, there was a competition for a logo design for Engine Company V, and tonight, we're excited to introduce Krista Patterson, a senior at University High School, whose logo was selected for this honor. And you can see the logo design that she created on the screens in the room. That logo will be used on firefighters' shirts as well as on the back of one of their fire trucks. Krista has been a student of the Arts, Audio-Visual, and Technical Communications Academy focusing on graphic design and has worked her way up to advanced art courses as well. Krista's teachers, Renee Ebeling, and our Dean of Academies, Christine Holochek, have joined her this evening, and we'd like to take a moment to recognize the two of them as well. We're also grateful to the Waco Fire Department for extending this opportunity, and tonight, we're honored to have with us several representatives from Station 5. First, please welcome firefighter Sam Belcher. Firefighter Tupi. Driver Puig. And the Chief of the Waco Fire Department, Bobby Tatum. Congratulations again to Krista, and thank you so much to the Waco Fire Department and the representatives here tonight for your service and sacrifice on behalf of the members of our community. We appreciate the countless ways that you support our community, as well as the numerous ways that you invest in the success of Waco ISD students. Continuing with our recognition of exceptional success, we'd like to switch gears to a program that has been successful not just one year, but two years in a row. The Rotary Challenge Team at Waco High School competed in the 52nd Rotary Challenge, which pits teams from central Texas high schools against one another in a general quiz knowledge tournament. The team from Waco High School competed against Harker Heights and Vanguard in the semifinals, and then advanced to Mid-- Take On Midway in the finals, where they won with a decisive score of 325 to 185. Our Rotary Challenge Team walked away as regional champions, and tonight, we're pleased to recognize the members of this team. First, please welcome student coach Olivia Henderson. Maddie Lacy, who is a two-year member of the team. Libby Grant, who is also in her second year with the team. And four-year team member and team captain this year, Boots Felton. The team is coached by Mr. Rick Lowe. If you're a parent or family member of one of these students, would you please stand so that we can recognize you as well? The finals will air on Channel 25 on Saturdays this spring at 6:30 PM. We don't know the start date yet, but I'd encourage you to catch all three appearances of the Waco High Challenge Team. And if you don't happen to catch all three, at least tune in for the finals, and in particular, the final question of the finals, where decisively our team put their mark on their role as champions. Congratulations again for your back-to-back championships. So the story behind that is that the team had such a decisive lead that when they were asked the question, the lyrics "Yo ho ho and a bottle of rum" are from what song, they knew they didn't necessarily have to get the song right and answered with "We are the Champions," to which the judge replied, "Wrong answer, but right." Up next, we're excited to highlight another great program from Waco High School that gives students opportunities to explore, develop, and demonstrate their talents, and that's the Waco High School Mock Trial Team. The students you're about to meet competed in the 40th Annual Texas High School Mock Trial Competition and came up third at regionals. This highly motivating, energetic, and challenging academic competition provides a great way for students to gain an insider's view of the judicial system. In addition to walking away with third place at this year's regional competition, several students also joined-- also received individual awards. Please join me first in congratulating team member and senior Boots Felton. Senior Rachel Stevens. Junior Christian Ramos. And junior Sophia Swinkie. Our outstanding advocates for the team were senior Olivia Henderson. Junior Bridget Eichenberg. And freshman Elijah Sriram, who was unable to join us this evening. The team's outstanding witnesses included junior Rebecca Heldenbrand. Sophomore Neil Dupuy. And senior Paige Dupuy, who was unable to join us this evening. The Waco High Mock Trial Team is coached by Mr. Rick Lowe. And if you're a family member of one of our exceptional mock trial students, would you also stand so that we can congratulate you on your student's success? Continuing on, we're going to switch gears and recognize several groups of incredible students from our Fine Arts Department. We're excited to begin by recognizing a group of orchestra students from both Waco High and University High, who recently learned and performed a piece for the UIL Solo and Ensemble Contest. Each of the students you're about to meet earned the highest possible rating of Superior. Please welcome, first, from University High School, Stephanie Mendoza. And Valeria Diaz. From Waco High School, please welcome Crystal Hiddle. And Evelyn Guevara. And while Emmy Scott was unable to join us this evening, we did want you to know that in addition to receiving a Superior rating for her solo, she also qualified for State. The University High School and Waco High School orchestras are under the direction of Eric Wolf. And if you're the family member of one of these incredible musicians, would you please stand so that we can congratulate you for your student's success? We're really excited to see what Emmy does at State in June as well. This is just an incredible program that's growing and seeing more and more success. Switching from orchestra to band will wrap up the special recognitions this evening with another exceptional group of students from our Fine Arts Program. Last month, we recognized middle-school band students who excelled in their auditions for Region Band, and tonight, we are proud to recognize a group of high-school band students who also found success at their recent auditions for a spot in the Texas Music Educators Association, Regionate All Region Bands. First up this evening, please join me in congratulating from University High School Julio Lopez. Jesus Barrigan. And Alejandro Vasquez. In addition to being selected to participate in a Region Band, this next group of University High School students also qualified for Area. First up, please welcome Willie Padilla. Sierra Martinez. Zane Campbell. And Julian Rodriguez. The Mighty Trojan Band is led by student teacher Ross Mitchell. And Director of Bands Archie Hatton IV. Next up, please welcome a member of the All Region Band from Waco High School, Zari O'Grier. And our last group of Waco High School musicians were selected for the All Region Jazz Band. Please welcome Sonny Cruz. His fellow All Region Jazz Band members were unable to join us tonight, but we want you to know as well that the Waco High School bands are led by Assistant Director Tyler Sage. And Director of Bands Scott Stuhler. If you're a family member of one of our outstanding high-school musicians, would you please stand so that we can celebrate their success with you as well? Congratulations to all of the students and staff members that you've met tonight. With that, we conclude tonight's special recognitions.
Congratulations to all our honorees this evening. We will now move on to Item 8, Audience for Guests. No one signed up to address the Board, correct? And so the next item is Discussion, Possible Action to Approve Hiring of Administrators. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the Board, members of the public. I would like to recommend for the position of Assistant Principal at South Waco Elementary, Ms. Monica Evans Jackson for the position. Monica has been in education for a total of 17 years. She previously worked as an elementary general education teacher and special education teacher for 10 years, and has served as the instructional specialist at South Waco Elementary for the past five years. Before I tell anymore about her, should we vote before we--
I'm nervous you guys have already applauded and we haven't voted yet, so I hope it wasn't premature.
Exactly.
You can either finish reading her biography and then we can vote, or we can vote and then you can tell us more about her.
Ms. Jackson is a proud graduate of Waco High School. She currently has a son, Malcolm, at Waco High. She is a faithful member of One Fellowship United Methodist Church, where she serves on the Board under the leadership of Pastor Brian Dalco. His ego wants me to include his name. Just kidding, just kidding. She is chairperson of the Pastor Parish Relations Committee and serves as a youth worker. She is a graduate of Baylor University with a degree in elementary education, master's degree in educational administration from Lamar University. In her leisure time, Monica enjoys reading, arts and crafts, cooking, praise and worship, and spending time with her family. Ladies and gentlemen, I proudly recommend approval for one of Waco's finest administrators, Ms. Monica Evans Jackson.
With that introduction and that response, it's gonna be tough not to vote yes. I will entertain a motion. Thank you, Ms. Manning. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Cordaway. Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations.
Ms. Evans, as customary, if you have any brief remarks or anyone you'd like to introduce to your family or friends that are here, go ahead.
I brought my whole village, and so I've got my Nana, my Mama, my school family, my friends. Do everybody stand up with your hands. Ms. Lee, so we are super excited. South Waco, our aim is to get an A, and we work hard every day and nights and weekends to make sure our students and our school is the first school to get an A in Waco High School.
All right, thank you. Also, I'd like to recognize-- like to recognize the principal, Ms. Tawanna Lee. If I may, just before I relinquish the floor, it just feels good saying this in the spirit of enthusiasm. I'd like to welcome back my friend who's been gone for a couple of months, Ms. Yolanda Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I have been asked-- we did not have a workshop this month because of the chamber event next week, and so there are some questions on a couple of the items on the consent agenda. I've been asked to pull Items C, E, H, J, and N, and it's my understanding the administrations asked that no action be taken on Items E, H, and N. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Item C, we need to proceed to a vote or a motion and then a vote so that Mr. Sykes can abstain. Is there a motion to approve the extension of the depository services contract? We need a motion. Well, we can do the rest of the consent agenda, can't we? You're right. Thank you, Mr. Manning. My first error of the school year. I need to make note of that. We will-- so I'll need a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Items C, E, H, J, and N. Correct? All right. Is there H, J, and N are being pulled? I need a motion to adopt everything else. Thank you, Ms. Dupuy. All those in favor say aye. All right. Then the items that we need to vote on are Items C and J. I'll entertain a motion on Item C, which is the bank depository services contract. We'll remember it needs to abstain. Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Cordaway. Any questions, comments, discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries, and we reflect Mr. Sykes abstained on that. Then we'll move on to Item J, which is approval of Spring Break Academy Compensation Rate. I'll entertain a motion. There is no motion, so no action will be taken on Item J. We will move on to Discussions and Updates, correct? Item 11. We'll begin with our initial budget discussion of the year. Ms. Davis?
May I make a few introductory comments? While Ms. Davis makes her way to the podium, I just wanted to make sure our staff is-- our public is aware that staff is fervently working on bringing a proposed balanced budget to this Board for possible action no later than August 31, 2019. It's a very, very meticulous process that includes a comprehensive needs assessment, completing a needs assessment of every department and every campus. All of our expenditures are currently being reviewed. All of our programs are under review, and I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that it's not just about salaries for us. I understand that our budget is eighty-- over 89% human resources, and so many people kind of think that that's all we talk about, but this is a legislative session. There are currently-- several of our teacher associations, many of which are here tonight, are currently watching bills that impact teacher salaries specifically. And so we're-- you know, our question as a leadership team is are they funded mandates or unfunded mandates? It may not matter to the employees, but it certainly matters in our ability to balance the budget. We have an entire capital improvement plan that is being reviewed, and we'll be bringing that to the Board. A technology improvement plan that outlays some of our blended learning initiatives and our hardware and software needs for the coming year. And not to-- don't get me wrong, because compensation is the most significant part of the budget. So for us, compensation is not just salaries. It is health insurance and making sure we review all of our employer contributions. And so I don't have to give an overview. I just wanted to commend Ms. Davis because we have a long way to go to get from February to the end of August. But I'm confident we will get there, and we just want to build confidence in the community that we have a process that is very transparent and very focused on us being good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Ms. Davis?
As Dr. Nelson said, this is just the start of the process. So tonight, all we're going to really do is look a little bit, do a wrap-up kind of of where we ended-- of where we ended last year, and where we had some of the variances as far as our final expenditures to the budget, look a little bit at that ending fund balance, and then look at some of the metrics that we've looked at in the past, such as our administrative cost ratio and our tax collection rates. Then we will look a little bit at, just briefly, at the 2018-19 update, kind of look at where our PEMS enrollment ended up for this fall, and then the impact right now is of third, six weeks on our state revenues. So the, we ended up this past year with audited actual revenues of 141.8 million and expenditures of 141.9 million. So our expenditures were over our revenues by about $112,000. Then we had sold some surplus at auction, and we generated about $47,000 off of that, and then we had transfers to other funds of $735,000. That gave us a net of our expenditures and other sort, other resources over our revenues and other sources of $800,000. We had a beginning fund balance of 44.8 million, so our ending fund balance is right at 44 million. This is not bad, we did amend in some projects that had not completed at the end of last year, and we'll kind of look at those a little bit. Plus, we did have some decline in our state revenue. So comparatively, looking at the variance in what we were projecting at year-end, revenues were a little short, 156,000, our expenditures about 1,005,000. So we were over about 1,003,000 of what we had projected, and then again, you see a little bit of a difference, particularly in the other uses, those transfers to our advanced academies, ended up a little worse than we had projected, primarily because we had sort of a change in leadership there, and they went in the summer to sort of makes, made some expenditures for equipment and supplies to start out the, this school year for this coming year, for this current year. So anyway, so looking at this for this, how we ended up, just looking at our trend of revenues and expenditures, you can kind of see, you can see, kind of follow state revenue actually for the, where we've had cuts and all in the past. Legislature, we had some cuts in 11-12, we're okay there, but you see our expenditures really exceeded that following year, exceeded our revenues because we did lose revenue sources. 12-13, we had made a number of cuts in that previous year, so our revenues were back over our expenditures. However, I want to remind the Board that that year is the year that we sold University High and some of those properties that we were rebuilding, and so a lot of that revenue that you see there is actually from the sale of property. The last couple of years, our expenditures have, 2016-17 and 17-18, we were doing some projects and our expenditures did exceed our revenues slightly. We also had some decline in what we had estimated for revenue due to some loss in ADA, but this year, as Dr. Nelson said, we adopted a budget for 2018-19 where revenues balanced with expenditures. For looking at just those revenues where we had some bigger differences, one of the areas, of course, was in, we had a small difference in our investment income. Fortunately, investment rates, interest rates have been up, so we're actually earning money on our fund balance, which we have not done for some time. As you can see, we had originally started out with a budget of 350,000, we ended up with almost 950,000 in investment income. Part of that was also due to the fact that we were more aggressively investing our tax revenue as it came in into mostly CDs. We're still really protected, but we were taking advantage of those higher interest rates. Athletics, we ended up a little bit higher than what we had projected. We did get, have some advertising revenue there at the very end of the year, so that's about 7.1% difference. But part of that change is also because we had some corrections between how we were booking athletic gate receipts and rental revenues in the stadium. So some of that loss you see in the other category of the 12.9% is actually a change in accounting. And then the other big difference is down under federal programs, that 50% difference. We had anticipated that our E-rate reimbursements would be in within the 60 days at the end of the year. However, we did not receive them until November, so they weren't able to be booked in last year. But that is that major difference that you see right there.
Can I interrupt you there for a second? I know going way back, eight, 10 years ago, there was a significant delay in getting some of the E-rate dollars in that were impacting cash flow on, on some of the projects. This looks like it was just a delay of a couple of months. Is that more indicative of what we experience now, is it may come in the first of the next fiscal year instead of the fiscal year?
Well, honestly, with E-rate, it's very hard to know. For a while there, we were actually getting it very timely in time to book, and that's part of why I anticipated it would be there by the end of the year. This year, it just seemed to lag a little bit more, but no, we are not experiencing those, you know, two years behind kind of thing. That said, we're also not getting near as much E-rate as we did in the past, so that's, especially we're, we're down to, you know, we were able to get E-rate reimbursement on things like our, what we call pots, plain old telephone systems and cell phones and all, and we are, as of this coming year, we're not going to get any reimbursement on those at all. So it's really declined a lot.
Thank you.
Looking at the expenditures, we've got a number of areas, I just sort of highlighted the kind, things in blue are really where Dr. Nelson did some restructuring, and we did have some positions that were eliminated or, or left vacant. So most of those, as you see highlighted in blue, were for that reason. The items highlighted in red were those items we were talking about that weren't completed or buses that weren't received at the end of the year, so we carried over those budgets into the current year. That is approximately a million and a half dollars, which is kind of where we were off on our projected estimates. And then you see in the purple, we've had, we really over-budgeted the payments into the Challenge Academy. That program has been very volatile. Again, we have revenues that are dependent on other districts' participation, and so we don't ever kind of know where we're going to be. So I had budgeted more at a level we'd been spending at, and we did not spend, did not have the participation that we've had in previous years. So that was off from what we had budgeted. And then the payments into the tax increment fund. We'll look at that when we see, look at our tax collections and our adjustments in a minute. There was a very unusual situation this past year that sort of affected our final collections from what was certified, but they were higher than we expected. Okay, so, oops. This just kind of starts looking at our fund balance and where we ended. We peaked in 2016-17 at, or 15-16, end of 15-16, at 32.19%. Now, again, this is the unassigned fund balance, so it does not include any of our committed or assigned funds. And then last year, we ended up the year at 27.3%, and then this past year, we ended up at 28.7%. So that's where we are going into this current year. You can see kind of what that looks like. More of that fund bal, of our total fund balances past year was unassigned. We rolled, we did not have a whole lot of projects left unspent at the end of last year. So you see that little, little blue slice is our committed and assigned funds that we rolled forward. This is our administrative cost ratio. It has been coming down fairly significantly over the past few years. I put the formula kind of down at the bottom. This is really our general administrative functions and our instructional leadership, and the denominator includes things such as instruction, your libraries, staff development, and guidance and counseling. It peaked in 2012-13 was the highest it was at. We were still within the range that we should be, but as you can see, last year, it came down, had come down significantly. Now, what you're seeing for 2018-19 is budget, so I would anticipate that that might still come down some more by the time we end up with final expenditures. The next slide is our tax collections. This is what I was talking about earlier. You see a very odd, in all the years that I've been keeping data for the district, we have never had this situation that we actually ended up with negative adjustments because our certified values were so much lower than what ended up getting billed. And the reason for that, we kind of talked about it a few times when we were looking at financial statements, there was a major commercial property owner, I think mostly hotels in here in town, that had appealed values but did not have the hearing before they had to, the appraisal district had to certify. So our certified values were much lower than what our billed values ended up being. So our collections as a percent of that are very high because we ended up collecting on that value by the end of the year. Again, you can see that also kind of in the bottom where you see our total tax collections as a percent of the levy, but our total tax collections and adjustments are rather flat. And this kind of just shows, down there you see at the bottom, this, we had a 5.23% of that, of our values this past year were because of adjustments and mostly due to that one property owner. Now, this is where we are with ADA at, in our fall PEMS, our ADA was 14,758, or enrollment, sorry, was 14,758 compared to last year at 14,823. We had been on a trend last year of about, a decline of about 2.8%. At this point, the decline is more like 4.3, that's a 10, 10-year trend, and then our ADA, you see down below that, it's more even decline, the last year's trend was about 3.1% decline, and at this year, with the 10-year trend is about 3.7%. We have been working, David and I have been working on the projections for this current year, and we are expecting, we'll be bringing those forward with our next month's presentation, but we are expecting a little bit of a decline again next year. We're actually trying to make that look a little bit better than it is looking right now. So looking at how that impacts our state aid with this current year enrollment, we are actually up because we have some of our special programs have had some significant increases. You can look down here, we've got some of these, special education is up $861,000, our comp ed because we went to the community eligibility provision for food service, that actually is impacting our compensatory education numbers because of the way that they fund that. So we're up $650,000 in state compensatory ed, and then we're up about $50,000 in bilingual. All that said, we're down $295,000 in our regular education allotment because we are down in total in enrollment. You do, we did get good news, though. I was a little concerned because our, we had, TEA had plugged in our state revenue from our 1882 campuses, and it was about $420,000 less than what I had originally projected. So I was a little worried because we had used their template and they kept, we talked to TEA, they said they were correct, their numbers were correct. So like I said, I was a little concerned that I had given the Transformation Zone campuses 420,000 too much, but they have come back, TEA has come back now and plugged in their numbers, and so we were right on target. The enrollments are up there, special ed numbers are up in the zone too, so we're actually generating a little bit more, but again, that's primarily in special education. So we had originally estimated 2.9 million, and it's right at 2.9 million, so it's right on target with what we had expected. Overall, our state aid for the general fund is up about one and a half million dollars. That's it.
I probably have one question on the move to the community feeding program, and obviously had a positive impact on state compensatory ed, but obviously, the free and reduced lunch was how previously we had calculated the percentage of students who were economically disadvantaged, and because we didn't collect those applications, it looks like that percentage dropped this year. Will that have any significant impact on our federal funding or Title I, because we have a lower percentage that are identified as economically disadvantaged?
No, but as a district, no, because we actually generate our, our Title I funds based on census data. So our free and reduced lunch counts will not impact that. However, by campus, it has, is having a significant impact because we have two ways that we can allocate Title I funds to the campuses. We can either use, well, actually, three ways. We can either use free and reduced lunch applications, approved applications, we can use direct certifications, and direct certifications come from the state for our students who are enrolled in SNAP or the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. So that is the two ways, or we can do a combination of those two things. Because we're now having to use direct certifications, because we don't have lunch applications, that there are some significant differences. We have, we are probably going to allocate our Title I funds for the secondary campuses because they were most impacted, based, because they can be funded based on their feeder pattern. So we have calculated the high school and middle schools based on their feeder patterns, but unfortunately, then that negatively impacts the elementary schools because those high schools have had lower numbers in the past. So it's sort of a lose-lose situation for, for somebody, anyway.
So is the feeder pattern the third methodology then for calculating that? You said there were two, and then you said?
We can only, well, we can only use either the lunch applications or the direct certified. So we have to use direct certified for elementary because you can't use the feeder pattern. But for secondary, we do have an option of using the elementary feeder patterns, which is most likely what we're going to do. But yes, there is significant impact between campuses. University High was very low, they lost a lot of money either way, even though some of their feeder schools, their direct certified numbers are not significantly different. So it's really hard to know exact, and, and before, when free and reduced lunch applications might be low, they could go out and do a push to get those lunch applications approved, even if the kids weren't eating, they just had to be approved, but it's much harder to impact those direct certifications because the families actually have to apply for food stamps or temporary assistance for needy families.
I saw some numbers from... I saw some numbers from, I guess, a newspaper article about the Texas Hunger Initiative that talked about countywide, the dollars that families were eligible for that were basically left unclaimed. So the families aren't getting those dollars, and then we're not getting through direct certification, the campuses aren't getting credit for that.
Well, the pot of money is the same.
Right, but the?
It just goes out differently to the campuses.
In terms of, is there a way, just in sort of, some sort of, and again, it impacts individual campuses differently. But it seems like there should be some way to do some sort of education campaign for those families that aren't applying that are eligible for those benefits. One, because it will benefit the family, and two, it will give us truer numbers of where, where those students are on our campuses. And it's just something to think about anyway, so that we get, obviously we saw a considerable drop in economically disadvantaged students on some campuses and?
And one of the things I'm going to do to help mitigate that, of course, and you've got some big gainers when we do this, is because that state comp money is up because of the CEP program, we're going to push some of that out under the state comp allocation, which goes out based on at-risk counts, and is not as impacted by those direct certifications. So we're trying to push a little money out in that way. But yes, it, it's really causing a significant issue for some of those campuses.
Other questions from the board? Go ahead, Ms. Teak.
Well, just, I don't know if this is a question you can answer, but maybe someone in testing or CNI, but how is that going to affect our status scores and where our schools are going to be on that graph and the next two? Will that translate this semester?
That is something they've been working on because we, there is another form that the district could fill out, or could have parents fill out, that we had not really done a real good job of it, but we've gone back now and made sure we had all of those completed that we could. But the parent, we can't use it for Title I allocations, but we can identify students as low or economically disadvantaged based on this parent, this form that the parent's complete, but it can't be used for Title I allocations.
What makes you understood, at least part of what I just heard, the federal, the Title I dollars don't change because they are a product of census data?
Yes.
And so basically what has changed through all this, and our not having the free and reduced lunch form applications anymore, is just how we allocate those same dollars within the districts.
Correct.
I guess, is it your sense that there's any great disservice or injustice being perpetrated by this new system of allocation that we really need to tend to it, or, I mean, I?
Well, again, we're?
I don't know whether to be upset or not.
We're generating another half million for comp ed because of being on that program, and all our kids are eating free. So, I mean?
Oh yeah, no, no, I wouldn't.
But that's the?
I want to go back. I think with the same amount of dollars, I guess it's just, is there some sort of unfairness in how we're now having to allocate the funds to the individual campuses that somehow you feel like this has resulted? I haven't heard you say this, but I'm asking if you think there has been some injustice come into fruition because of this new system of allocation. Somebody's, I mean, I think I heard university is because possibly they're not getting the Title I dollars?
Well, they're not probably completing food stamp for, applying for food stamps or tanna. A lot of times?
They're not doing this year they had historically.
Exactly. Now, some of the campuses that are losing more are campuses that are probably less economically disadvantaged to begin with. We do have, and we have some campuses that are losing a lot of Title I money because they're down in population in total anyway. I mean, we have a number of campuses just declining in population. We've had, you know, when Harmony opened last, year before last, we had a real negative impact on some of our elementary campuses there, Crestview in particular. So we have some campuses that have lost population. We've got, you know, we're having, had some discussion because we've got a few campuses that are very small in population now, and it's, you know, getting harder and harder to fund them. There's new federal guidelines coming out, supplement versus supplant, that we will be having to implement that makes it more difficult to fund very small campuses. Because they're expecting, you all have probably heard the phrasing about the money follows the kid. Money follows the student. Well, the federal interpretation of that is that every kid gets the same amount of dollars. And so, I mean, you can say that elementary maybe gets less than high school or vice versa, but that means every campus gets the same amount of dollars per student. And it's very difficult to fund a campus that has maybe 350 kids with the same dollar per student than a campus that has 850. So it's something that is going to be a difficult thing to look at.
All right. Other questions from the board?
Appreciate the initial update on the, on the budget in the past year. Thank you.
We will move on to item 11B, which is the annual debt report for the fiscal year that just ended. Dr. Nelson?
Ms. Davis?
That is a new, last year was a new legal requirement from the, that we have to post this debt report. So this is done in accordance with the comptroller's rules for this particular report. And so we have chosen to post it on our website. You can either fill out a spreadsheet that gets posted on the comptroller's website, or you can do the report and post it to your website, and then file a link with the comptroller's office to our website. So we have posted it on our website and have filed the link with the comptroller's office. If you have any questions about it, it's basically what our outstanding debt is and how much we might have left from our last bond money. So if you have any answering questions?
Any questions on the debt report? If you'll stay there just for a moment. The next item C is the monthly financial report. I know there's a written report in the board packet. Is there anything you wanted to highlight in addition to that, Ms. Davis?
No, I think with what we've talked about with the revenues is the main thing I would have highlighted with our general fund. One of the things I had hoped to get to in tonight's budget presentation but didn't is our food service. We do have quite a high fund balance. I know some of us remember when it was in the negative by a million dollars, but at this point, we are almost in excess fund balance, and the CEP program and bringing all this extra revenue into food service, we're not really spending it as fast as we need to. So we've been kind of on cliff about getting some equipment purchased and looking at some lines and all to make up for that. Otherwise, debt service is right about where we expect it to be.
Any questions on the monthly financials? Mr. Manning?
Looking at the page for our health insurance, are there, how are we doing with the health insurance?
On that fund? Actually, we're doing really well this year. We have made, of course, the first few, four months of the year through December were on our old plan design. So our new plan design starts January 1st, and we took the plan that was losing so much money last year and modified that somewhat. Don't expect to have those kinds of losses. So it's probably a little behind budget at the end of December. And if you see, I did put some additional graphs in there, kind of of where we ended up. And you do see that one plan that ended up at?
The one?
135%.
Right.
And so that's the one that we have made adjustments to. So I think that that will take care of a lot of those issues for this coming year. And I expect that this plan, with the rate increase that we did last year, I do expect that that, that this will be in the black this year. It was not in terrible shape this past year. We only were down 100,000, I think. So I expect they'll be in really good shape. And we are still getting monthly, we have monthly meetings with our consultant to look at the numbers and see where we can make adjustments. But if you want to talk about wellness, then you'll need to talk to HR.
Other questions on the monthly financial statement? Davis, thank you. We will move on to our monthly Lone Star Governance Continuous Improvement Report. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have our career and technical education director, Mrs. Donna McKeon, will take us through this presentation on our industry certifications and our practicum completion. Mrs. McKeon?
Good evening. I'm glad to be here this evening and to talk to you a little bit about our board goal, which is to increase the number of industry certifications. If you follow the CCMR work that's being done down at the State Capitol, you know that industry certifications is a pretty hot topic. Because as we move forward, when students earn these certifications, they are earning one point toward being considered college and career-ready. So on goal two, you will see the list of certifications that we're currently offering at our different academies. I made some notes there because the list of certifications for CCMR is actually currently under review, and we expect to get the final list of new certifications that will be coming out. That should be coming out in April. And so they've had a lot of industry input. It's gone through a very strong vetting process. But these are the certifications that we are currently offering. If they have two, the two stars simply means that those are certifications we anticipate being on the list next year. And then things like forklift driver and CPR first aid, those are not likely to make the list, but our local industry advisory boards want to see us to get those. These students can start these certifications. Some start as early as the sophomore or freshman year if they take the business information systems class. And then some of them are more into program. So these are the ones that we are currently offering. Are there any questions about these certifications, or what they might look like, or what they represent to a local industry?
Any questions from the board on the available certifications?
The next is the 3.3. And these are the courses that these certifications can be earned in. Right now, under the current accountability system, the current technology can contribute to CCMR in several ways. The first way is that they can earn a certification, and that receives one point. The second way is that we can, a student can take one of these courses, perhaps there's not as current certification with the course, and then we can earn a half a point for students completing these advanced CTE courses. And so these are the ones that you see that we're currently offering. As we examine this each time we meet, the more students that are taking these courses, the more students that will be earning, have the ability to earn certifications. At this time, we have 475 juniors and seniors that are enrolled in the advanced CTE courses, and their current passing rate is 99%. And this are kids that have been in these academies for a couple of years, and they have found their passion for their course. And so having a high passing rate for those courses is not unusual because they are so excited to be in those courses.
Any questions from the board?
I got one. How you doing, Ms. McKeon?
Hi, I'm fine. How are you?
Just one, my quick question. Do, in the forklift, do they have a forklift at Guam?
We have, we have two forklifts at Guam.
Okay.
Yeah, we have two. And we have a practice field for them to practice loading it and loading it with it.
Dr. Nelson?
Can you give a quick update on registration for Guam for next year?
Yes, sir.
Based on our conversation we had with the executive board?
Yes, sir. We had met with the executive board this week, and we have been recruiting heavily as in Waco ISD this last year. We currently have 184 students, and that's for all the districts. And at this point, we've finished registration for Waco ISD, and we have, it's 220 that have signed up for Guam, but just from Waco ISD. That's before we touch any other district. And so we're very excited about that, exceeding that number. Joyce Stimson has really been a blessing to us in getting out and recruiting those Waco ISD kids. And so we're very excited that before we even start with our surrounding districts, our projections exceed what we currently have. And these are, and I have to give a shout out to the counselors in Waco ISD, and to Dr. Nelson and Dr. McClanahan that have really pushed us to have early course selections. These are solid course selections. Obviously, there's going to be a kid that moves or something that unusual that happens, but these are solid numbers for Waco ISD because as we move forward, they've made the selections, their parents have approved those selections. And so I really do want to, to thank the administration for supporting that initiative to have those kids ready to go. And Joyce will continue to recruit from the surrounding districts.
Questions from the board? You want to pull the mic towards?
Most of these recruits, are they all Waco ISD or?
That's all Waco ISD. All Waco.
Wow, that's good.
We haven't even added any numbers for the surrounding districts. And so we have, we, for example, Troy, Troy's increasing their numbers. We met, we, last week, and they're just now starting, the smaller districts, because of smaller numbers, they're just now starting that recruiting process. And so we're very excited. The executive board, I think they were about to leap out of their chairs when we met the other day when they saw those numbers.
For the questions from the board? Ms. McKeon, we're supposed to spend 50% of our board meeting on this one report under Lone Star Governance. Do you have any heartwarming anecdotes or anything to share with?
Yes, I do. I do have a warning. I have them. I can talk to you about kids. You don't want to ask me that?
I know you do. No, and it's, thank you for the report. Are there any other questions from the board?
Okay, thank you.
We will move on to reports on gifts to Waco ISD. There's a written report in the packet. Anything we need to highlight on there, Dr. Nelson?
No, sir.
All right. Then the last item will be reports from the various committees around the community on which board members serve. Anybody have anything they want to report on?
Since we don't have a meeting next week, just remind everybody, the 13th Annual WISD Education Foundation Celebrity Cook-Off, March 29th. Sponsorships are still available, and individual tickets are available as well. So encourage everyone to consider attending. It's a great event, great fundraiser for the WISD Education Foundation.
Other announcements on the committees? I do want, before we turn it over, Dr. Nelson and I obviously serve on the Prosper Waco Board at your place. Each of you has a copy of the 2018 Initiative Report, and we'd be remiss if we didn't, once again, thank Dr. Polk for his leadership in really making Prosper Waco part of the fabric of this community. And they'll begin the search for the next executive director in the near future as they begin a listening tour with some key funders and stakeholders across the community. And Dr. Nelson?
I wanted to thank you, trustee Teakell, trustee Quarterwig, for attending our intergovernmental meeting that we had yesterday. It was an outstanding meeting, lots of wonderful presentations about the great things happening between the school district and the city of Waco. Last but certainly not least, Transformation Waco talked about some of the great things happening that are just really because of our commitment to collaboration. So I wanted to recognize Dr. Robin McDermott for her presentation yesterday, and thank the trustees that were able to attend, for attending. I believe the city of Waco, the mayor, city manager, all were appreciative of our time together. And I think it was a very, very good meeting. And last but certainly not least, tomorrow, we have university versus Waco High baseball, 4:15. They only play one time this year, so I look forward to that. And if I may, just, I wanted to be sure and recognize, in her first meeting, I'm sure we will have a long relationship, professional relationship together, but we wanted to recognize the new education reporter for the Waco Tribune, Ms. Brooke Crum, who has joined us for her first meeting tonight. Go easy on us. Hopefully, I'll show you guys some questions. And last but not least, one of my mentors is here. He doesn't know it, but I've been watching him since he was superintendent of schools in the Mansfield Independent School District. He's now working with Apple and with our technology department. I just wanted to recognize Dr. Bob Morrison, who, he doesn't know it, but I've watched him. He's one of the best superintendents in the state, so I wanted to recognize him as well.
Thanks, Dr. Nelson. I just, I want to echo your comments on the intergovernmental meeting. I think the... I think the, at the end of the meeting, the mayor, Kyle Beaver, described the meeting as powerful, and I thought that was a good description in terms of every report dealt with words like partnership, collaboration, community ownership. And it was really heartening to see a bunch of initiatives that, for the most part, have all developed in the last 18 months, and attended the leadership of Dr. McDermott and others across the community. So, Mr. DeBeere, are there other announcements?
While he's coming up, there will be no church visit this Sunday, but next month, in March, we will be going to Antioch Community Church on the Fourth of Sunday.
All right.
Just wanted to highlight a couple of those other incredible partnerships that are doing great things for our kids. Tomorrow, the Gamma Epsilon chapter of Phi Delta Kappa has teamed up with Transformation Waco and with Waco ISD to host the Hidden Figures Summit. That's part of the incredibly powerful Hidden Figures project that that group has organized to show some of our middle school girls the opportunities available in the STEM fields, and we're really excited about that. On March 1st, our friends at Sodexo are hosting the Future Chef Contest, which brings together kids from our district and a number of other districts in the area that they serve to explore talents in that area. That'll be in the afternoon at University High School. We also have our Men's Empowerment Summit that day. And the following week, on Friday, we have the Women's Empowerment Summit, where the district has teamed up with the Junior League of Waco to continue this incredible tradition in Waco ISD that Dr. Nelson started last year of bringing together on the first young men, on the eighth young women, with community leaders who truly are role models, and having a robust discussion about what it means to be a leader in your school, a leader in your community, and what some of the challenges are that our kids face. And so we really appreciate the way the community has answered Dr. Nelson's call to invest in the students in our district and in their success.
And then, thank you, Mr. President. Last, but certainly not least, one of the reasons we're not having a board meeting next week is because the lovely, honorable Ms. Virginia Dupuy is being recognized. She is my friend, she's been good to me, and I just wanted to say congratulations to her for the Chamber of Commerce recognition. And her son will be celebrating a birthday next Thursday. So I wanted to be sure and say happy birthday to the honorable Carrie Dupuy next Thursday.
Any other announcements from the dais? We will sing it, we'll sing it next Thursday. All right. Hearing no objection at 8:20, we'll stand adjourned.